All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 10th, September, try again. September 7th, 2022 Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I'd ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please be seated. All right, we don't have any minutes to accept for tonight. So we'll go right to our regular agenda. First out on the agenda UPS Store, Woodbury Pharmacy, Public Hearing for Proposed Interior Alterations to Woodbury Pharmacy to allow for the use of 400 square feet of existing floor area to be utilized as UPS Store. Said property is located at 535 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps. Section 209, Block 4, Lot 4, dot 2. I see Ronald, I believe he's with UPS if I remember correctly.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm great.
Okay, um, before we open the public hearing and we go over the report, do you have anything to add or new developments for us this evening?
Aisha, are you on the call? So I'm here to lend some support to our franchisee. I believe from the last conversation we had, there were documents that she needed to submit from that conversation. I believe she has done so and I believe we're just waiting for the board to review her submissions.
We, yeah, we did get the signage. The only thing I think, believe is still outstanding is the entity disclosure form needs to be updated with the correct parties, right Kelly?
Yeah, so you did get an updated form and it was dated August 17th, but it was signed by Irina Istak. But the county shows the owner of the property as my mayor Istak. I know I'm not saying that correctly. So that's who actually needs to fill out that form.
Okay, May, Irene, I see you trying to speak. You're on your meet.
Yes, so you are saying that's supposed to be signed by Mayor Aisha?
Yes. But I appreciate you getting it in.
Yeah.
Hello, everybody. Chairman Gerber Mark Ferranti with UPS. Hi Kelly and all the other members. How are you? Kelly, we'll get that to you as soon as we can. Irene, how I, it's your husband, right?
Yes, that's my husband. He's also hearing us, but we didn't know he's supposed to sign and I took it to the, Jennifer was the one who took the paper. I wish she mentioned that may have supposed to sign it.
Now, do you need a new form, Irene? Do you need a new form?
That's what they are saying. I need to say may have to.
Kelly, could you email Irene just a new, new blank form?
I have the form. I can get it. I
That's what I'm asking. Or that's, you do have the form.
Yes.
All right. So why don't we get that Kelly? Your husband's in, he's not traveling, is he?
No, he's right here next.
He's local. Okay, good. All right. So maybe you put this to bed very quickly and get you opened. It's where I'm going, Arena. You know, let's give these folks what they need. And get the store open as soon as we can. Now, do you need any support, Arena, for me?
No.
Okay.
As far as I know, Ron was great helps, so.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Kelly, that's all you need from us then on the, on the UPS side. Is that one form?
Yeah, that was all that I had that was outstanding. It's not a, it's not a big lift, so I wouldn't worry about it too much, but I don't know, Chris, if if Natalie or the board had any other requests.
Yep, we're gonna go on that, Miss Natalie, right now.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. So at this, I'll just kind of pick up where everybody left off on outstanding issues. So I think at the last meeting, we discussed the sign in the area and whether or not it would be complying with the code. So we did review the revised rendering and it looks like they're proposing essentially to split the existing sign into and designate half to the UPS Store and half to Woodbury Pharmacy. So that is less than what's allowed by code. So it is permitted. The only other thing I think was the number of colors. So the board has to decide that the number of colors is not distracting to drivers. They're currently proposing five where I think three are permitted. So that's something that the board, I think, could make a finding on. The second thing has to do with the applicability under the moratorium. So the applicant did submit the projected water and sewer demand form. It's essentially blank and really what we noted in our memo is the DEC standards for calculating water and sewer for retail are based on area and then also the number of employees. So if there are going to be additional employees in the building, then there could be a modest increase in water and sewer demand. It's 15 gallons per day per employee per shift. So I think either the applicant needs to kind of note that, you know, the number of employees are not changing on their form or, you know, provide those calculations to demonstrate what the increase in usage is going to be. So that's the one thing I think that we have outstanding. And then the other issue in our memo, and I think we brought it up at the last meeting, or at least had it in our, our prior memo, is that the survey that was submitted previously needs to be signed and sealed by the preparer. And really that could be a condition of your action or even handled as part of our review for plan signing. And then we also had a couple of comments on the changes to sign lighting. If the applicant would just add a couple of notes to the plan indicating that the the lighting will be steady and non-flashing. And also we noted that the code has specific requirements for sign lighting that it be turned off at or before midnight. Unless the business hours would exceed midnight. So I assume in this case it would be, you know, prior to, so you know, the applicant can kind of confirm compliance with that on their plan and/or you can include that as a condition of your action. And that's all I have.
All right, that's good. Irene, you're not going to add employees to UPS Store. Are you going to work with the same staff?
We are not adding employees. As a matter of fact, we used to have in the store like seven, eight employees before. Now we have three, a lot less than used to be. So I don't think that's an issue.
It's from a water point of view, it's, it's not. And Natalie, I just wanted to make sure you knew that. So there actually a decreased number of employees. And then on the signage, Natalie, we've, so we have five colors in there. We can only have three. Help us understand that. How do we get down to three colors? Do you decide? The drop or do we?
I appreciate the clarification on the number of employees and from that point of view, I think you can probably, Arena, if you would, just update your form and indicate no new employees proposed for the store.
That's what I did. It was on the, on the application. No new employees. I didn't put any.
I don't have that on the projected water and sewer demand form. You know, for like again, for my purposes and for the board's understanding, I think that there's no issue here. And then as far as the number of colors, the code allows the planning board discretion to modify the permitted number of colors based on them not being distracting to drivers. And I think the other stipulation is if it's like a different, if it's different shades of the same color. So as long as the planning board is willing to make that finding, then you can modify that, then the planning board can modify the number of colors to say five would be permitted. I apologize if I'm just rambling.
No, not at all. You're not, you're not. So five is permitted, Natalie, or three?
Three.
Three.
The planning board can modify the number if, as long as they find that it's not distracting to drivers.
Do you know when they will do that?
Well, I would assume that the planning board would consider it tonight as part of their discussion.
Got it. Okay. All right. So that's good. I, I, I read it to know. Okay. Irene, did you have any other questions, anything that needs to be clarified or Ron? While we have these nice folks, while we have their attention.
So Natalie is saying that the light have to be turned off, the whole light have to be turned off before midnight?
At midnight, yeah.
Even if it's, we, we, right now we have Woodbury sign on for 24 hours. So.
Pylon sign? Are you talking about the pylon sign, Arena?
That's what the, the lighting sign. That's what Natalie is mentioning, I think.
Yeah, I didn't know that the pharmacy sign was illuminated. If if that is the case, we can, we can reverse course and not illuminate the UPS Store sign. So if, if, if your pylon sign isn't illuminated and it doesn't look like there were power, there was power to that sign, if you want to clarify that. It's been a while since I've been up there.
I think if I can just clarify, I believe that the existing sign is illuminated. I think there's floodlights currently shining on it. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I saw that in your plans, you were proposing sort of a backlit sign, which is not an issue. It's just that per the code, the lights have to be extinguished for midnight at or before midnight. Or if the business hours extend after midnight, then the planning board, I think, has some discretion. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The, the issue would be that the lights would have to be reduced in intensity is what I think the code requires. So you know, typically we would see like a timer would be installed with the light to make them turn off automatically at midnight. You know, that's one option.
Irene, is there a timer on it? Is there a timer on it?
No, there is no timer on it because pharmacy has, yes, it does close at nine o'clock, but it has extended emergency hours. So we, after, after the regular hours, we still are working. We still serve people in the community. So.
So I'm talking about specifically the, the sign, the sign lighting. So you know, not to say that your, you know, internal lights have to be extinguished or anything if that wasn't clear. But this is a requirement of the code. So I, you know, would suggest.
About the sign too, but you are saying we are not allowed to have the sign after the hours.
After midnight, yes.
After midnight, they would have to be reduced in intensity.
So at this point, you still have, you have floodlights illuminating the, the other sign. So if you were to shut off the UPS Store sign lights, I would figure those floodlights would illuminate both sides.
Yes, I guess.
So wait, hold on. Now you raised a question for me. So only the UPS sign is going to be internally lit and the other half is going to be unlit?
It can't be.
I just. That's the way it just sounded from what Ronald was saying.
From my understanding, your, your pharmacy sign, which is the pylon sign, it only has floodlighting.
Right.
So what I was proposing is that if you shut off the UPS Store lighting at midnight, both signs would still be illuminated by the floodlighting.
Okay, that's so, that's clever thinking. I appreciate that, but it's not the way that, that works. The sign that is being improved is the sign that is represented in your drawing. So it is the entire sign that's out there. So because they're in front of this board and they're getting approval for this new sign, they have to comply with the way the code is written today. So it has to be, I, the, the lighting, it needs to be off after midnight. That would, that's part of the approval.
Irene, the solution may be simple. It's just buying a timer from Home Depot.
Yes, I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
Whatever it needs to be, especially now, Ron, it's not going to be the old sign and the new sign. It will be one new sign for the pharmacy and for the store. So I guess it applies to the whole sign.
Yes, both have to come down at midnight.
Okay, we, we will do that.
It may be just a timer from Home Depot.
Yes, of course. Yeah.
And I would expect you'd remove the floodlights and just let the internal light.
No.
I think that is.
They can't leave the floodlights, Mike.
That's everything. Remove the floodlights.
Right. The, the internal lighting and the floodlights all have to go off at midnight.
I mean, remove them completely, the floodlights. And just rely on the internal light.
And daylight, Michael, right? And daylight, right? Yeah, I, I kind of thought of the same thing about three minutes ago. You just get rid of the floodlights, but what, Irene, why don't you try the, the timer? I think it may be a solution, not an expensive solution. And it may meet the, you know, the requirements for these folks here.
And just from a technical aspect, floodlights on an internal light diminish its effect. You don't see it as well.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that this could be a condition of the planning board's action. Obviously, I mean, that's a typical, you would normally see that as part of any conditions associated with lighting. So if the planning board, you know, agrees, then Kelly can include that as part of the resolution and then, you know, it'll be monitored moving forward.
And, and I would like to see a rendition with five colors or however many you want, so that we can consider granting that.
They do, they, they have it. They submitted it. They submitted it with their recent submit. All they have. What was this date on this? What is this? 618? Hold on, what was it up? Mine doesn't have a stamp on it.
Think Natalie has it there.
August 25th, they submitted.
I can try to show it to everybody.
Yeah, I got it, Natalie. Share the right screen. So this is the current sign and this is the proposed sign cut in half. You have the three colors, white, blue and red, white continuing, this aqua color. And then the UPS logo.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay with the colors. Yeah. Me three, four. Okay. All right. So any other discussion about sign lighting time? So we'll go to the, we'll go to the public hearing then. Because that's what we are here for tonight. Sorry. Okay. All right. So I'll open the public hearing. This is for the UPS Store. Anybody that wishes to speak on the UPS Store, I just ask the unmute, state your name, where you come from, and then what your comments are. Second call for UPS Store Public Hearing. Just unmute yourself. Third and final call for the UPS Store Public Hearing. I will offer a motion to close the public here.
Second.
Second by Michael. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, so the board's already agreed that they're okay with the five colors. I'll offer a motion to accept the sign rendition as presented. Tommy, any questions? All in favor? All right, I will also offer, I don't have my notes, but we did seek her already, right Kelly?
I don't have that you did, at least in my notes. So if you could just acknowledge that this is a type two action.
Yep, I'll offer motion to acknowledge this is a type two action. Second by Michael. Any questions? All in favor? Okay. So I will also offer a motion to have counsel draft resolution approval to be consistent with the engineer's memo from this evening. Also to include the updated entity disclosure form and then the water, the water demand form. I think I got everything, right Kelly?
I got, I got a couple.
Okay, cool.
I'll, I'll include them. Don't worry. I got it. I got my notes.
Thank you. All right.
Concerned about increased traffic?
No, we went, we.
Yeah, we discussed that a while back, didn't we?
This was a long time ago. We already got that.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, and all right, I think I saw a second by Tommy, right?
Yep.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we'll see you at the next meeting for the resolution.
And what date would that be?
21st.
Forgive me, is this month or October?
This month.
Thank you. Just wanted to be sure.
Yep, no problem.
All right.
Anything else for us?
I think we're good, folks. Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your, your time and effort. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too, Chairman Gerber and everyone else. Bye bye.
All right, next item on the agenda, Mara, Mara, Mura. I'm sorry if I got the name wrong. This is for ARB. It's six college. Review and discuss documents submitted on the ARB and Ridge Preservation Application for Proposed Changes to an existing single-family dwelling to include stucco on the front facade, entrance portico and driveway carport. Said property is located at six College Drive in Highland Mills, known as Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 245, Block 2, Lot 8.
I'm here.
Who's I'm here?
Marius Mura.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good, good. So if you can just give us the thousand-foot view of what's going on, what you're looking to do and then we'll get at.
We are, I am trying to install a stucco and replace the existing facade for the front face of the house. As I presented a sample from my neighbor across the street. And I would like to install at the main door. I don't know how to call it. It's like a gazebo to be a, a cover. I don't know how to call it. To protect the main door from rain and sunshine. Because you know, it's the third door, we are changing and you know, it gets damaged over short period of time by being exposed to water and sun. And also I want to build some kind of a cover of over the driveway. Where I, we can park the cars.
All righty, thank you, sir. All right, Natalie, I know you have a little bit of a memo on this one.
Yeah, so I'll just get right into it. I won't repeat. So there are, I think, like three primary components to this application. The stucco or vinyl to stucco, the new front entry portico and the carport canopy. I, our memo recommends that the applicant provide a plot plan for you to consider this application and really more for the canopy and the portico issues, just to make sure that they meet setback criteria required by the code. Typically require that the plot plan lists the bulk requirements of the zone and also the corresponding compliance with the same. The applicant sort of described how they provided photographs of other portico and carport structures to sort of demonstrate their intent for the application. But we wanted the planning board to just kind of understand that that isn't necessarily what they're specifically proposing for, you know, their home and their lot. So for example, the photos of the front portico show like Gothic-style columns and metal railings where the elevations that were submitted appear to indicate that like wood columns are actually being proposed and the railing material isn't specified. The carport photos show roofs that are flat and peaked, but the actual carport roof proposed is angled. So there are variations in the design that are being proposed from what was submitted to you. So with that being said, we typically provide the building department upon your approval with the final ARB form and renderings that you approve, so that they know what needs to be attached to the resolution and, you know, visually what things are supposed to look like. So if the board's not going to require a rendering in this instance, then the drawings that were submitted should at least indicate the materials and the colors of each of those features that are being proposed. So that we can, you know, attach those materials to the resolution and provide guidance to the building department on what you're approving. We've also recommended that the applicant confirm whether the color of the stucco is intended to match the existing siding or if the proposed home is going to be two-toned. Okay. So I think that's like.
Will, yes.
So it's like a beige color, I think, is what was indicated.
What I, what I, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Proposed into the pictures, it's my first time. I didn't know how many details I may need to present. I just, as per my understanding, I, I was providing the main structural supporting columns and beams to support the structure with what I'm gonna build the face is going to be, the columns for the portico is going to be stucco, same as the front of the house. They're going to be wrapped in stucco. And the wood beams will be the supporting posts for the roof, the actual portico roof. That's why I presented the wood structure instead of being more detailed. I didn't know how much detail you guys may need. Nobody told me. I just provided pictures what I'm intending to do. And if I need to provide more details, I will do definitely with no issues.
Did you get a copy of Natalie's memo, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure for ready reference.
Yes, yes, I, yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay, so just to kind of clarify again, what you're proposing needs to be detailed on the plans that you submit as far as the materials and the colors that are being proposed for each architectural feature of the canopy and the portico. Okay, so I think once the board has that information, they can kind of consider it in whole. And then also sometimes the board would require a rendering be submitted so that they can, you know, visualize the materials on the, you know, proposed again, structures. So that's something that the board can discuss, you know, when we're finished with our report. So the only other, just have a couple more comments. The photo of the similar home showed that there were white accent features at the corners and around the windows and doors. If that's going to be proposed, then it should be indicated.
That will be the case in my, in our situation, yes.
Okay, so you'll want to make sure that that's detailed on the plans that you submit, so that when, again, if the board.
They have to be, do they have to be engineer drawings?
No, not for this particular aspect. The plot plan though should be accurate and should show the dimensions of your lot and what's being proposed in relation to the lot lines, so that we can confirm setbacks. And typically that would be by survey.
I understand.
What else? So the other thing was, the plan for the carports that were provided, Marius, had no about a proposed shed. So if that's not proposed, it should be removed from the plans, or if it is proposed, then the board needs to consider those details. Again, the materials, the colors and the setback from property lines. And then the last few comments I have are.
Can I make a comment about the shed? The, I, originally I put the shed by mistake before I went to the building department. And I was guided to go through a zoning board, which I went through already the, the meeting with zoning board and I got approved for the shed location.
Okay, so then the.
And I obtain a building permit, yes.
Okay. Um, we may want to look at that a little closer. I know there are exclusions under the ARB code for like sizes of sheds, I think, but I don't know if you would want to just submit those materials for the architectural and ridge preservation review now. Since you're, the planning board's reviewing your application for those other features that are proposed. You know, again, it's the materials, the colors, sort of the aesthetic of the shed on the lot that the, this, the board would be considering.
Everything will, you know, I got approved with everything matching the, the house siding. Beige with everything with white corner rings and everything. Or match exactly the house. It will be built it as same as the house, the vinyl siding.
Okay. And then I wanted to also just point out for the board that in 2021, you reviewed this lot for solar panels. And at that time, you made a finding that the home was not visible from the view corridor. So you know, our memo notes that presuming that your position on that is unchanged, it appears that you could consider any waivers under that section of the code that you think are appropriate. And then the other things that obviously need to be considered still are seeker, GML referral, and whether or not a public hearing could be waived for this application. And I think that's all I have at this time. Unless the board has any questions.
Does the board have any questions for Natalie? Okay, does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do, Rich. Yeah, when we talk about more detailed description, I would say end measurements. Example, at the canopy, I don't see on the top the dimensions where it says asphalt chingo roof, wood framing. There's no. Uh there's no dimensions, at least I don't see any, how high that's gonna be. So he's got to include the height.
Yes, we will include, we, we will be more detailed, it was just a preliminary sketch. I didn't know how mu- again, how much in details I have to go. Nobody guided me, oh, you have to be so detailed, so and so and so and so. I just presented what I was guided to present.
And then you, uh these, this is in front of your two garage doors, you intend to. Still use the garage? You, you know, pull in from the carport or I'm just curious.
Yes, yes, because I, I mean, um my, my intentions are. I don't, I cannot, I don't want to put any posts in the middle to prevent the car, the cars turning into the garage if needed.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, uh feelings on provide, the providing of renderings?
I think we should see renderings, definitely help visualize it better.
Everybody's okay, Steve, alright. Okay. Alright, so you have Natalie's memo, um so really you gotta, once you answer her questions, provide the information. Uh back to the building department, uh with the, the renderings and the dimensions and that, uh the board. Will put you back on the schedule and we will take finish further uh review of your project.
Do I have a timeframe to present for the next uh hearing or?
Well, everything, in order to be uh considered, everything has to be in at least ten days prior to the next meeting. And the next meeting is, is the twenty first, so it would have to be in by this Friday to be considered for placement on the twenty first. Meeting, um so I don't, that's probably not doable, so. Fifth is our meeting, the fif- our fifth is the, October fifth is our next meeting. Uh so it really would depend on how quickly you uh can turn everything around.
Yes. How quickly I move in this, okay?
Yep.
I understand.
Any questions for us, sir?
Uh not any for, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, so once you get your uh documents back in, we'll, we'll, the board will see you back again, sir.
No problem, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, have a good night.
Everyone, have a good night.
Great, safely.
Right, safely, yes.
Thank you, bye bye.
Next item on the agenda, Farcas twenty eighth first avenue. Review and discuss documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation for proposed addition to a single family dwelling. Said properties located twenty eighth first avenue in Highland Mills, known as the Village of Woberry, tax map section two one four, block one, lot nine. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good, good evening, how are you?
Alright, sir, you wanna give us the uh overview?
Sure, so what we're doing, um this is a recent mission, we revised some like stuff, information and added some information to the plans. What we are doing is we adding an addition to the house and also rearranging the house inside. We're not adding any, any um rooms or so, we enlarging rooms and re- rearranging rooms. So we adding a, a addition to the left side of the house. And we will include to the, the upstairs and the basement. Um we adding a little um addition to the entity, so we can have a little larger entity area. And um this is basically what we are doing, everything which is inside the house gets a little larger. Um the dining room will be a sukkah as well. And that's the, that's the scope of the house. The scope of what we're gonna do in this, in this renovations edition. And I have actually, um one of the previous comments already was about the culvert. I've ordered an updated survey, which, which is gonna show the actual location of the culvert. The culvert right now is not actually, is not in the place that we're gonna build the addition, so I want to see it on the, on the updated survey they're gonna, we're gonna have. And um I will also show a setback line up to the side to cover deck. And um. Um well, shown on the, on the updated survey that we're gonna have. And also update the elevations to show the height of the building as it was in the comments and um. And also we will revise the uh, the uh. Form that, that we submitted with the updated, the updated um materials we're gonna use for the, for the staff.
Thank you, sir. Natalie, you wanna go ahead with your report?
Sure, um you'll kind of already went over some of our comments and said that there would be materials forthcoming. Um that will address them, including the updated survey, modified setback line, um ARB form. Um so I guess I will just kind of discuss some of the. Things that the board might want to consider, um you know, as, as part of this application, so. We noted in our memo that the change in the building footprint increases the gross floor area of the home by fifty percent. Um so we're recommending that you consider that under your similarity and dissimilarity criteria in relation to the home itself. Um the applicant did provide information for two other homes for you to consider dissimilarity and similarity. Uh one of the homes is, I think, across the street from this property and then the other is further away, so you may want to consider other. Uh nearby homes within three hundred feet or say within the same development. Um to consider your similarity, dissimilar, dissimilarity criteria, so that could be a direction to the applicant if you agree. The ARB form is going to be updated, uh we've asked for the grade lines around the foundations be shown on the plan. Um and this is in your ARB code, so it's not, um it's, you know, again, a suggestion in your code. And again, we thought that that was important just because of the drainage culvert issue, but um if it's not located near the addition, that's great. Let's see. Uh with respect to Ridge Preservation, we've recommended that the applicant confirm the visibility from the view quarter, that's Seven Springs Road. Uh the applicant already revised their plan uh to reflect the intent to use non-reflective windows. And also indicated that no trees are going to be removed as part of the construction of the addition. And those were our comments related to Ridge Preservation, so. I guess, um you know, from my point of view, until we get the revised materials and updated survey, that's kind of all I have at this time unless the board has any questions.
Questions for Natalie?
Do you think that this uh Ridge Preservation, that it's visible from the corridors or, or I mean, we should.
That's. This house is further down first avenue, right, towards the corner, but first.
Yeah, it's, it's inside of the, the curve, the turn, so I, I don't, I personally don't think it's gonna be visible, but um if we have to take some pictures, we'll do so.
Uh how's the board feel, um?
I don't think pitch is necessary.
Yeah, I'm not. Uh everybody else?
I'm okay.
Yeah, if you do, if you look at Google Maps. You can't, that, that area is kind of um. Buried back there in the corner, I don't think you're gonna be able to see it either, especially being they're not removing. Um any trees or anything that are there?
No trees in the way.
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna get a, you'll get a pass on having to put in uh the Ridge Preservation's photos.
I would like to see better comparison housing, no, that's just the. You had the one on first avenue, another one on Shunamunk.
Well, the one on first, the one he showed is like directly across, I think is almost directly across the street.
Shouldn't we have another one from around there, same?
Well, you gotta draw the three hundred foot circles, wherever that three hundred foot circle.
I mean, is, is, I mean, how many do you need, I mean, do you need two or one is enough, what has, what's your?
We usually look for two or three, just to the idea. Um so I actually, I haven't been back there in a while, sir, so I don't, I'm not a hundred percent, remember a hundred percent what, what's in the neighborhood now, what's not. The board can also take a ride through.
I'd say, we get, I can always take a drive up there.
I would take a drive up there as well, it'd be better to just get a, a visual.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Anything else the board wants to see or needs or how do they feel overall about the renderings that the applicant has already submitted? Cause I think we have a feel, we have a fairly good idea for what the house is gonna look like with what the applicant has given to us already.
Is this sewer or septic?
Um, good question, I don't remember it off the top of my head, um.
There's no septic on the, on the drawings.
You're adding several bathrooms, that's why I'm asking.
I, I don't, I don't think it's septic, I don't think it's septic. But we're not adding, we're not adding any, any bedrooms to it.
Bathroom, bathrooms.
Bathroom, maybe, maybe we adding, we adding one bathroom, right, but I believe the septic goes by the bedrooms, right?
Aren't you adding? You're adding a bathroom in the basement and you're adding a basement on the first floor for the additional.
We have it, I mean, there's exist- existing two bedroom, two bathrooms in the first floor. I see the drawing, the drawings are, it says basement floor, but I mean, it's the first floor, it's the typo, but. We have two bathrooms in the first floor and we're gonna have two bathrooms in the first floor.
Yeah, with the addition, you're adding bathrooms too.
One, one bathroom will be in the addition and the master bedroom suite and then. One is outside, yeah, and is outside, is right between the kitchen and the dining room, so we can have a total of two bathrooms upstairs. Um and that's the same amount that we have currently. So if you see on, on page four, page four is the existing plan and page six is the proposed.
I, I see two, on page four, I see. Two, on, on the first.
There's a mistake on, on page four, it says first floor, which is a basement and it says basement, which is a first floor. So the, so the, the right side is, is actually the first floor, it shows two bathrooms in there, right?
I don't see that.
Natalie, water usage is just determined by bedroom count, correct, not bathroom count?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Also, I don't believe this area is served by municipal sewer, um so it must be septic.
It's just not on the drawing, that's why I'm usually, septic would be on the drawing, cause don't you have to be a certain distance back?
No, it doesn't show here, I, I don't know what it is.
Okay, so. So we've got dining ma- master bedroom, one, two, we have three bedrooms in the current and we're doing. One, two. Three.
Three.
Right, so the bed, the bedroom count is staying the same.
On the addition?
Yes, they're relocating, if you, if you, if you look, they're, they're moving, they're, they're moving the, the bedrooms. Out of the current footprint and it looks like they're taking. What is currently the dining room and the master. Uh bedroom, they're turning that into um the dining room slash sukkah. And then they're taking that space and they're moving the bedroom, the master bedroom into that new addition. So they're combining those two rooms, turning it into the dining room slash sukkah and moving that bedroom into the addition. So they're not actually adding bedrooms, they're keeping the bedrooms out, count uh the same.
You'll, I mean, I think you probably already know, but your survey should pick up um the location of the septic system. Then you'll want to confirm that as part of, you know, this building and proposed addition.
Yeah, sure, I'll have the survey, make sure to, to, um, I'll have him add it to the survey, with a new survey.
And what about the water?
I'm not sure about what it is, if there is, if there is municipal or not, I'm not sure, I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Right, but the, 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 the main, the, the crux here is that the bedroom count is staying the same and that's what drives. Uh the determination of water usage, so it's staying a three bedroom home. So, right.
Basically, it doesn't matter how many bathrooms, correct, it's, there's three bedrooms.
Right, you're, the D, we, the, the D, the Tuama na health is um. Use determines water usage based on uh bedroom count, not bathroom count, cause think about it, right, you could have. A, a, a one bedroom house and put twenty seven bathrooms in it, if you, if you wanted to, right? But in essence, you only have how many kids can sleep in a one, in a one bedroom, I know it's a very, you know, outlandish example, but I'm just trying to say, it just. It, it really doesn't matter, you know, maybe everybody wants their own bathroom for whatever reason, I, I don't, I don't know, but. So.
Hey, you know, some people don't want to wait in line or walk too far. Just saying.
Yeah, no, so if the, the water, you, so yeah, so this, he's gonna, the applicant is gonna give us an updated survey. Uh I asked that the board just take a ride through the neighborhood to do the comparison over there, just to look at the other homes. Um we're good with Ridge Preservation, cause I think this board has agreed that it's not viewable from the ridge corridor. Um really, the um outstanding issues here is everybody, based on the drawings, the colors. Are we okay with the design and the look and the feel of the house, or you guys waiting to you drive through the neighborhood? Cause I don't want this applicant to come back to us and say we don't, you know, next week and also we don't like the colors or, or something like that. I, I kind of want to help us move this, move this along for this, for this gentleman.
It looks like an improvement to me.
It does, I, I agree there, it's, it looks like a nice home from the, from the rendering.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I, I take no obsessions to the, obsessions to the colors or anything like that either, so. Um just, I ask everybody to please drive through the neighborhood, take a look for comparison and you can make, reserve your final judgment. Uh when uh you all comes back to us with the outstanding information. Public hearing, um. Board feel we need one, or does the board feel?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't believe so either.
Okay, uh so we're all, that's right, we got, I'll make a motion to waive the public hearing. Uh based on the board's input, second by Michael, any question, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, y'all, so it's uh back on you, just a little bit of uh homework.
Yeah.
And then um your public hearings got waived, you are, you're uh exempt from Ridge Pres. Um and then the board will make the final determination on uh how it fits into the character of the neighborhood when they take the drive through and you come back to us.
Sure, very good, thank you very much.
Yep, sorry, sorry, go ahead, Rich, and I know Kelly, you want to say something, do I heard you, I saw your mouth move.
I just. I'm just a little confused, I'm looking at page five, existing house. And then I'm looking at page nine, proposed, that house looks totally under proposed. That house looks different than the house on page five, are we changing the look of the house?
Yeah, it looks like they're modernizing. The exterior of, of the home, they, they have the elevations, um there any windows? Looks like a patio, a porch. On the, on the front left corner, so yes, they, they are changing the, the whole look of the house, they're modernizing the look of the home.
Alright, so, so they're gonna give us specifics on, on. On the windows and, and the coloring, right?
That is on page ten, they gave us the.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, on page ten of the, uh I think if they called it the ARB pamphlet or booklet. Um Architecture Review Board, yeah, so there's a, on page ten, there's colors of. The roofing, the siding, um the pillow windows.
Okay, I see it, okay.
Yeah. And then they gave us the next page, you can see there's a house across the street that already looks fairly similar to what. Trying to, to make look over here.
Okay.
That. You, anything else or does that make more sense for you now?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh one last house, uh housekeeping item, I'll type, uh make a motion to type this as a type two under secret. Second by Tommy. Uh any question, all in favor?
Hi.
Um just quick question, Kelly, we don't, do we need a water sewer form if the bedroom count's not changing?
So they did provide one and it said no increase in water sewer, I, I defer to Natalie if that's sufficient. I mean, the bedroom count is not changing, so usually. I'm outside, I'm outside my wheelhouse even saying that, I'm surprised she's not like slapping the microwave, the, the microwave. Sorry, I was just like frantically looking for the form itself, no, but they did submit one and there's no bedroom, change in bedroom count, so it's, it's good. The way it is, it's signed, it's executed, I don't think we need anything more from my point of view.
Okay, um and then if the board wants, and this is completely up to the board, we could authorize. Counsel to draft a resolution of approval, um based on waiting for the applicant to give us back the requested items and the engineers.
I would say go ahead with that.
And then again, we're not approving anything, we're just, if we like what we see, we're.
We have already.
We have it already, alright, so you want to make the motion, Tommy?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, second by Michael, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, I think we got everything now.
Um, just, I take away what I was gonna say, so there you go.
I guess not.
Well, no, you actually didn't forget anything, I just wanted to, cause similar to like the last applicant. Uh when this application is gonna be listed as dependent on when we get the new materials, so I just, you know. Just wanted to point that out, so. just wanted to point that out, so.
So the onus is back on you, sir.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for us?
No, I'm good.
Okay, we'll see you when you get everything in.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night, sir.
Good night.
Alright. Uh, East Gate Management, one fifty, I'm sorry, next item on the agenda, East Gate Management, one fifty two Seven Springs uh, road, uh, this A R B review, review documents submitted for A R B and Ridge Preservation and proposed single family dwelling and removal of existing dwellings, said properties located one fifty two Seven Springs Road in Highland Mills and known as the Village Wood Ray Tax Maps, section two on three, block one, lot thirteen, dot twelve. Alright. Uh, Patrick, if you're trying to speak, you're on mute.
Here we go, Pat Hutton with M J S Engineering.
Good evening, sir.
Here for the client, the client, um, has a family function tonight and will not be able to attend the meetings, but I, I think we can answer uh, the questions that are needed.
Okay.
Jay Meyer is also here.
I see you, if you wanna go ahead, either Pat or Jay, if you wanna just a thousand foot view and then we'll get into it.
Sure, um, I, I believe the client dropped off the storyboard and I believe we've answered most of the questions uh, from Natalie, um, I do have a clarification on the water, the uh, the, the bedroom, the home design is for seven bedrooms, but the septic design is for eight. So for that reason, there are eight listed on the form and seven listed on, and shown in the, the house, um. Because of the size of the house, we'd like to keep the eight bedroom design at this point, um, which would be eight uh, hundred and eighty gallons per day versus the old house, which is built nineteen thirty one, which would had a flow of uh, four hundred and fifty gallons per day because of, back in nineteen thirty one, the flows were much higher per bedroom. Um, the other, I, other issue of, for the walls, um, I don't believe we submitted a sample, I could share my screen and show you what the client has in mind. Um, but the, the wall will not be um, all that visible to the public, it, it's, it's going to surround the house, um, the, the site will be uh, covered with trees mostly. And um, it just, it won't be seen, but it's, it's going to be a natural color and um, it'll be, they're, they're basically a modular block wall and there'll be a, a light brown color, the fencing will be a green uh, fence, uh, chain link fence um, above the wall for safety. And um, I think those are the major issues as far as the engineering goes.
Well, when you say a green chain link fence, you don't mean a, a solid, like a chain link fence that has those plastic?
No, no, it will be, it will be a green plastic fence to blend in with the grass as opposed to, uh, you know, it's not gonna be filled with uh, the, the pipe cleaners, as I call them, um, or anything like that.
Okay. Alright. Natalie, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, thank you, um. So, let's see, we last saw this applicant in June, um, you previously waived the public hearing requirement for the application, um, a determination on seeker remains to be decided and whether or not um, well, I guess it's really the visibility from the view corridor, which I think we described in our memo, Seven Springs is the view corridor, so it's essentially a buts the view corridor and will definitely, most likely be visible, but that's for the planning board to discuss, um. With respect to the number of bedrooms, Pat, I think that for the planning board's purpose, um, we're looking at this from an A R B and Ridge Preservation review and not necessarily for the design of the septic system review, and they have to consider the increases in sewer and water based on the number of home or number of bedrooms that are being proposed. So if that's seven, which it is, then that's what should be indicated on that form. Um, but really, for the planning board's purpose, the applicant proposes to demolish a three bedroom home and construct a seven bedroom home, so you know, seven or eight, it's, it's definitely gonna be an increase in the water and sewer demand, um, although this is served by a private well and private septic, um. We talked about the retaining walls already, so Pat described the materials that are being proposed and the colors, um, you know, if the planning board would like to see sort of a visual, um, sometimes you would request that, but at least it should be listed on the A R B form. Um, and that's, uh, you know, again, I, I think it's three tiers of retaining wall, so um, it's for the planning board to decide whether or not, you know, you need additional information to evaluate that, um. Let's see, uh, we've recommended that applicant prepare and provide a table that um, considers the mass of this home uh, proposed to other homes in the area, so you can consider the change in size and the similarity and dissimilarity criteria.
Uh, we, we already provided that, um.
Was it in it?
We did, yeah, we, we did the whole study with, with all the parcels around, which was in the last submission and the, the, the board seemed uh, fine with it.
Okay, I think, I, if I remember correctly, maybe they were just individual sheets listing the homes, sometimes it's helpful for the planning board to look, just a single table.
No, I had a whole pamphlet with photos of each home, the, each lot with the square footage of each house with the tax forms, um, it's in the record, it's in the record, so.
No.
They were all listed out with the square footage and there, there are a lot of similar homes in this area of that, that size.
I think what my point, Pat, was just if the planning board can consider all of that in one table, then it's easy for them to look at the size of this home compared to other homes in one, in one sheet rather than the, the booklet that was provided, I understand the information is there, but if a table could be provided, and again, that's to the planning board's discretion.
Where, where do you want it? In the, in the booklet or on the plan?
Um, it could be a part of your booklet that you've provided previously, and again, you know, the planning board can talk about that after I finish reviewing our comments to see if that's something that they would like to see, um.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay, um. What else? I, I didn't see a copy of the material board, I understand if that was dropped off already and the planning board had a chance to look at that separately, that's okay, I know it was requested at the last meeting. Um, one other thing that we wanted to discuss was the tree removal, so at the last meeting, we talked and asked the applicant to clarify what trees were going to be removed, um, so they have done that. Uh, the proposal is to remove eighteen trees that range from six to thirty six inches in diameter and the applicant to offset the removals is proposing three white oaks, um, along Seven Springs and then five green giants on the sides of the property and green giants are like arpevides, um, type of a tree. So we've asked the applicant or the planning board to consider, um, whether or not maybe there would be an opportunity for the applicant to preserve some of those trees that are proposed to be removed and or um, if the planning board would like to see some additional plantings to offset the removals, so again, eighteen trees are being removed and eight are being proposed, um.
Okay, can I respond to that?
If you, if you'd like to.
If you don't mind, yeah, sure, the, the, the ones being proposed are mostly pines that are either dead or dying with the addition of, uh, we are wiping on the front of these presents coming down. They're they're, I can say from trash trees, they're not, they're not of much value, or on the cor, or along the front edge um, of Seven Springs and around Melville and run up, up, up that, that west side there. The, um, so you know, there's a sliver of, we only, only.